We're back. I'm going to call to order this work session, April 28th, 2021, and we have a number of items from planning. And we start with Mr. Myers, ordinance 2021-13. Good morning, Mr. Myers.
Morning. Can you hear me okay? All right, I'm gonna share my screen here so we can see the packet. I'm sure you all have a copy of your own as well. Okay, so this is petition number 2010-PUO-03. It's ordinance 2021-13. It is the Joseph Green, also known as Clear Creek Urban Planning Unit Development Outline Plan Amendment 2. It's located at 4831 South Rogers Street and 4833 South Rogers Street. So I'm gonna go through this packet, do a brief summary of everything, especially the updates that we've seen. It went to two plan commission meetings and heard public comment at both of those meetings. The first one was on January 19th, 2021, and the second one was on March 23rd, 2021. At the March 23rd, 2021 Plan Commission Meeting, the Plan Commission forwarded this petition onto the County Board of Commissioners with a positive recommendation by a vote of six to three, and we'll get into more of those details throughout this presentation. Okay, so I'm gonna scroll down through this section here. A lot of these sections with Plan Review Committee, Plan Commission Administrator just kind of gives you a synopsis of what happened at each of those meetings, what was discussed, and what kind of changes after those do to kind of get an idea of how this petition has developed. So overall, the petition site is comprised of a 4.12 acre property, Perry Township, Section 22, excuse me, 20, and it is currently made up of three parcels. Originally, it was a Joseph Green PUD that was more or less light industrial type uses. And since then, they have acquired, the petitioner has acquired two other parcels to combine into one larger parcel and effectively rezone into a new PUD that will be referred to as Clear Creek Urban, which will provide more or less a mixed use of both commercial and apartment-type housing and townhomes. So they are amending the zoning map to rezone the other parcels, which are RE1, RS 3.5 slash Pro 6, MR, and the existing PUD, which is a Joseph Green. Okay. So a little bit of a background here, this is right next to, adjacent to the Southern Meadows Major Subdivision that was approved last January for a major subdivision petition, preliminary plat. Currently, that location is undergoing a petition to also become a PUD that will increase the density. So there is some working together with that petition and this one, at least with respect to road improvements and some land transfer in order to get the acreage here that's in this petition. The road improvements in regard to West That Road and South Rogers intersection. So both of the developments will be utilizing the new intersection there that will be established through the Southern Meadows petition. Here we have the approved uses of the original Joseph Green PUD. So if you look at them, they are mostly industrial type uses. And now with the current petition here today, there are a number of new uses that are more or less neighborhood-type style, trying to provide amenities to the Clear Creek area. And we'll go through some of those here in a minute. But here's the breakdown for the actual property itself. In the next page, you'll see a graphic with different colors. The yellow will be transfer areas from the Southern Meadows. The red is the existing PUD, and then the green is the portions of the property recently added by way of quiet title action. So here, you'll notice the yellow, which is going to be transferred from Southern Meadows. And then here, another yellow Meadows, the green, acquired by way of quiet title, and then the red is the existing PUD. The configuration you see here is most accurate for what the petition site looks like. I know that on other maps in this presentation packets do not represent these lines as accurately. That's because they're just more or less for reference, and it's sometimes quite difficult to get these lines drawn to this level of detail on the GIS maps. So just remember that it looks like this. The top part is fairly narrow and is all in floodplain. And then the section red is existing PUD with some extra acreage added from Southern Meadows and the quiet way title. So I'm just gonna scroll through some of these more referential aspects of the packet that covers location and the current zoning. And then into the section of use comparison. So within the petitioner's outline plan, they propose a number of new uses in, for this property. These are all listed here. Some of them were already in the existing PUD, but most of them were not. So they are providing a bit more commercial-type aspect that some of them do have an amenity for a neighborhood style of use. And they also proposed some new uses that they defined themselves as well. They offer so many uses to try and reflect what the market may allow them to have there. But they do have some restrictions they've imposed on themselves for each of the buildings. Specifically, the larger building will have no more than five commercial spaces at a time. And the smaller commercial building cannot have more than one commercial use at a time. So continuing on through our packet here, we do have some design standards that will be proposed for this new PUD, meeting open space. They have a lot of typical design standards such as maximum building coverage, as well as standards for no townhome or apartment shall be more than two bedrooms. And then they broke it down into each of these separate areas of the PUD proposal. Area A is designated open space. That was that entire yellow rectangle in the graphic before. It's entirely in floodplain. It will be all designated open space with a hiking trail, a couple park benches, and a picnic table. There will be no permitted uses on that property as it's floodplain. Area B, which will have the largest building, it will have a commercial space on the bottom floor and then multiple levels of apartment spaces above it. The commercial floor on the main floor could be converted to apartments if the commercial-type uses don't work out. But here are some of those design standards they are suggesting for this structure. Again, three stories not to exceed 45 feet, and then it is limited to five commercial uses at any given time. Area C will be all townhomes. Again, the gross density, 15 units total in this area. This will only have a few permitted uses. It will only have the, I believe, home-based business and home occupation type uses. No commercial will be allowed in this area as it is primarily residential. Area D, which will have a a commercial and residential structure, a commercial on the main floor and an apartment above. It will have only one commercial use at any given time. And here are some of those design standards for that area as well. Area E on the farthest south section of the property will be designated open space and will have no committed uses as well. And there will be a detention basin there for stormwater use. Table three kind of gives a breakdown of each of these areas for the proposed development with respect to RE1, RS 3.5, and the MR zoning districts. So just a good comparison here to see how the standards differ from the existing zoning designations on the property. Some discussion of landscaping here, especially regarding street trees, the nature path as well. So just some different design standards here that don't quite meet Chapter 830. But there are some, there is some wiggle room within respect to their proposal and getting the landscaping done appropriately. Parking is a, has been an issue, a point of conversation in multiple meetings. I do my best to give a good breakdown here of where each of those areas will have for parking. Overall, given the constraints of the lot, there's no way that it could meet Chapter 806's parking requirements, especially considering commercial parking. Commercial parking standards depend on the type of commercial use itself. So theoretically, if the whole main floor of the commercial building, the larger building, was all a beauty salon, it would need an exuberant amount of parking spaces per Chapter 806 that just aren't available on this size of a lot. But they are proposing throughout the entire PUD a shared parking aspect where any type of the uses can use any of the parking within the PUD boundaries. But here I have a summary, basically building B, excuse me, area B, which is the larger building, commercial on the main floor, apartments on the top. Will have 15 parking spaces available, as well as 10 residential garages. Area C, buildings two through four, all the townhomes, they'll have 23 parking spaces plus an additional 15 residential garages for each of the units. And then building, excuse me, area D should be building five, and that is the small commercial building with one apartment on the second story. Will have a total of 25 parking spaces, so a total of 88 parking spaces total, including those residential garages. And again, they're proposing to share all of that parking in the entirety of the PUD. Just a little bit of breakdown here from Chapter 806 and some staff analysis based upon what would be required if we saw that all the units were a maximum of two bedrooms. And again, if something like a beauty service was located in the commercial spaces, at least 100 parking spaces would be required per Chapter 806. And here we have a table, kind of goes through some of those parking standards comparison with Chapter 806 and the proposed PUD. Just kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at. Site conditions overall, there is infrastructure already on site. There is sanitary water. There's proposed stormwater facilities, and this four coordinator has looked at, but they will be in more detail on later stages of this, if they get to the development plan stage. There is floodplain, as you can see almost the entirety of that northern section, which is area A, is all in floodplain. Bio-retention is proposed to be mostly in area E, the very south end, as well as some underground retention in area B, per the recommendation of the county and the store coordinator. More language here about infrastructure and access, some details that we could go through if we want to have any discussion about them. Some comments from stormwater, and then some site photographs that I will just slide through here. There was an issue with these existing structures from the original PUD. There was some demolition that needed to happen, and then the petitioner left these two sides of the structure. And it was an enforcement case with the building department for a short time. However, there is a letter within this packet that states that the building department is no longer in enforcement with them and that this situation has been resolved for the time being. Entering into the Conference of Plan Discussion, which also received a lot of conversation from the Plan Commission as well as members of the public. It is designated as Makua Mixed Residential and Makua Open Space. And in this section, all of the green highlights are areas of the Makua Mixed Residential designation that fall in line with the proposed PUD. And everything with the gray highlighting are aspects that are not in line with the proposed PUD. So overall, there's a bit more green than gray, particularly adding new housing choices compatible in height, walkable, transit accessible distance. There is a multi-use path that will be going through the entirety of the PUD from north to south that will help with pedestrian access and walkability, as well as neighborhood feel, allows for safe and comfortable bicycle travel, existing sanitary sewer services, green spaces, usable green spaces, walking trails. You know, again, more of that type of thing, especially some of the design standards are on point here with this mixed residential designation. And then some of the things that didn't quite fit are some design standards like front setbacks are a little different than what would be expected. Same with some more of the subjective things like well-designed neighborhoods feel as though they have evolved organically over time. Community gardens are absent, sidewalks on both sides, and there's only the multi-use path on the western side. There are dead ends, at least with the northern portion of the property that comes off of West That Road. It deadends into the commercial-type use and the residential garages there. Things like that. So for your review, kind of helps to see how it falls in line with that designation. Let's get down here through the outline plan and see some of the exhibits, and then we can open it up to some questions. Here we go. So here's an illustrative conceptual site plan overview. And that's a little pixelated right now, so if we need to pull up a clearer one, we can. But this is building one, this is area B. This is the commercial with all of the multi-floor residential above. This section is area C with paired townhomes, building two, three, and four. This is area D, which has the single commercial building with residential on the top floor and all the parking. This is area E that will have the detention and open space. And then this section up here is area A, which is on floodplain, and you can see the delineated walking path that they will install as well. If we have some more exhibits, if you want to go through them, but right now I think is a good time for questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Myers. We appreciate you. And let's see if my colleagues have comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah. Are the garages shared?
No, I do not believe so. I'm not, that's a good question. I'm not sure about building one, but I know that buildings two, three, and four, each unit will have its own garage.
And then is there any other parking available in the area?
Another good question. So basically, everything that they've delineated here in these sections, and then this parking area over here are what they have available for this property. They have also proposed the option of allowing the US Post Office, which is actually right here, to also utilize some of the parking in this area. And there has also been some conversation about the petitioner suggesting that they utilize a parcel here that they also own for parking for the post office as well. So it looks like this is essentially all the parking that they'll have because parking along South Rogers Street would not be available.
Yeah, I would, I think it would be rather horrible to be a resident and come home and discover that you have no way of parking your car and getting to your home. It would be, if there were street parking or something like that, then maybe there would be more possibility.
I agree. I think that they are situating themselves to have those garages provide that kind of space for the residences and then have overflow parking as some of these areas. But again, you know, some of the commercial-type uses may spill over into these areas as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I'm also concerned about parking for one thing. I understand that there's only 15 covered parking spaces in building one where there may be 20 to 24 apartments in there. And then it just depends on, you know, whether or not there's extra available parking, like Commissioner Jones said. I also wanted to ask, there's, there's no ADA provisions in this in terms of there's no elevator in building one. And then the the easement there for the extension of that road, which would go into Southern Meadows, is that as wise as it should be?
Sure. So there are some ADA spaces provided within the parking areas. I can't speak to the structural design of building one. I know that there has been some discussion about an elevator, although I'm not for certain if that is set in stone or not. This is, this area here, this is just an illustrative image, conceptual site plan. So this actually may be wider than it appears. We do have some other examples in here that may provide actual measurements. Let me see if we have one from here.
Well, I guess I'm especially concerned because this is going to really increase traffic that goes in and out of that road. So we may need, there may need to be left turn lanes coming out of there. And it may impact the other, the west side of Rogers Street with what, whether or not we need to upgrade that road. And so I guess, I guess one of the things that, to me, could happen is if there were less, there were fewer apartments, fewer townhomes approved, then there would be more space for parking and less of a need. Well, there would be fewer people buying for those parking spaces.
Yes. So we do have a traffic study available. I don't, it doesn't look like the link worked for this one, but the highway department has reviewed the traffic study that's being performed. And essentially, a four-way stop will be warranted for that section. They will have left turn lanes and a right turn lane coming off of South Rogers Street that will enter into West That Road extension, as well as turn lanes coming out of those areas as well. So it appears that traffic will be accommodated through the four-way stop. And the traffic study actually covers the proposed density of this partition as well as the proposed density increase of the Southern Meadows petition. And then also the former White Oak, or also known as the Trails petition, that was also going to be increasing density in this area. So through, through analysis of those developments and in the traffic study, they said a four-way stop would be warranted there. I will say that planning staff did have a number of concerns still outlying at the time of the plant, last Plan Commission meeting. Some of those have since been, or were fulfilled by the petitioner before the meeting, so the last packet didn't, wasn't quite as up to date. So in this section, these sections here, I gave a breakdown of what staff was still worried about. And then each of the red text gives a response from the petitioner based on what they did for the for that next Plan Commission meeting. I will note that the Plan Commission did recommend a positive, excuse me, recommendation. However, they did not add any new additions to that recommendation. So what is on the existing ordinance is what we have at the time. There's also been a conversation from, with the petitioner and the county attorney regarding some of the language in the ordinance that I will note, and that was the petitioner in their ordinance has language about repealing and replacing the Joseph Green PUD. And the conversation was about whether or not to replace some of that language with amend the existing PUD to create the new Clear Creek Urban PUD. I am not privy to how that conversation ended, but I will be speaking with the county attorney and the petitioner to make sure that if we need to change any of that ordinance language from repeal and replace to amend, or if we're keeping it, I'll get that straightened out by the next time we hear this petition.
So part of the, also the request was that they'd be allowed, what height was it?
A maximum of 45 feet.
And for some of these kinds of things, it should be 34, is that correct, for a maximum? Or not?
I believe in each of the design standards for each section, the building one will be the tallest. That will be no higher than 45 feet. And then the remaining buildings will have a lower height restriction. Let's see here, be specific. So area B, which will have building one, which is the largest structure, will be no higher than three stories, not to exceed 45 feet. And area C, which is the paired townhomes in a row, that will be two stories and not to exceed 34 feet. This is all pulled from the outline plan. And then area D, two stories, not to exceed 34 feet again. So a little bit of different standards for each area within the PUD.
I guess also in looking at this, it seemed very, very close to Rogers Road, the whole kind of building space that was being proposed.
Yeah, we do have some setbacks labeled for each of these areas. They are measured from centerline. Looking back at the, I think it's this page, at the illustrative plan, you'll note that there is the, there is space for the multi-use path that will cut through the property from north to south and offer some connectivity.
What about the, I think one or two of the people, I mean, there were people that came and spoke that were in favor of this and people who were not in favor of it. What about the discussion about heavy trucks being on Rogers Road and what it'll do to the road? Maybe trucks that will be required for the construction?
Yeah, so there was some discussion about that. A member of the public did bring that to the attention of the Plan Commission. They were concerned that heavy equipment would degrade South Rogers Street. I believe Lisa Ridge spoke to that in that it is a public road and that unfortunately, if there's any damage done to the road, that the county would ultimately be responsible to repair that. It's difficult at times to determine which contractor or which development is actually causing the damage at times, especially when there are multiple developments going on in an area. So at least that's what she had to say on that topic. Overall, though, there were a number of people that were in support of the petition, and they were speaking to an excitement for having more amenities in the area, more housing options, and just giving the area also a facelift, if you will, because the current site is industrial in nature and not really typical of a neighborhood community-type feel, which is what this is proposing. People of the public that were in opposition were worried about were worried about density, as well as traffic. Some were nervous about how it would look in respect to the surrounding area. And some of those other conversations involved, like you stated, the harm to the roadway and just the character of the area.
Thank you. Thanks. It looks like we lost Commissioner Jones. Hopefully, she will be back soon. Probably a bad connection. So, did, and I was not planning on asking anything, because I've been through this petition many times. And, and I do want to say that the petitioner has been really good about making amendments and revisions to this plan. But the, ultimately, the planning staff recommendation is what?
At the time of the last Plan Commission meeting, planning staff had recommended denial based on, let me see if I can get to it.
It's on the very first page. There you go.
Yes. Based on specifically finding B, which states, "To the extent to which proposal departs from zoning and subdivision regulations such as density, dimension, bulk, use, required improvements, and construction and design standards." Essentially, the planning staff felt that the petitioner is trying to do too much, put too much onto the acreage of the site. And we outlined some of the concerns that were, that were still here, that were still present at the time this packet, the first, excuse me, the second Plan Commission packet was published. Since then, after conversation with the petitioner, a lot of those have been addressed. But overall, planning staff still retained the overall recommendation of denial for the last Plan Commission meeting.
I think it's important to note that, I believe it was Mr. Wilson who pointed out at the last meeting, the concern that if you look at the floodplain map, and there are, you know, great intricate plans for drainage, but if anything is off, even by a little, there's no room, there's no room to maneuver. And that was, and that was the concern that, that he discussed. And that, that relates to the sense of doing too much on a very limited amount of property. So, and, and I appreciate that concern, because all the residents in that area will be impacted. So, okay. I don't see that Commissioner Jones is back yet. So the plan is to bring this to the Board of Commissioners next week?
Yes, that is the intent.
Okay. Do my colleagues have any concerns about that? Are you, did you have, if you have other questions? Oh, there she is. Great, welcome back. I was just asking if this is coming back next week? And if any, if either of you have concerns about that, if you'd like to wait another week, if there are questions that you want to have answered by staff, or if you want to take a closer look at this first before we hear it, just say the word and we can move this on our agenda to a different date?
Yeah, I think I might appreciate that. I've been extremely busy and haven't been able to pay as much attention to this as I would want to.
So the, the 12th of May, does that sound amenable to both of you? Okay. So, and that still keeps us within our timeline of required hearing dates, correct?
I believe so. It was approved, or excuse me, not approved. It was recommended for positive recommendation on the 23rd of March.
Okay.
So.
Sixty, sixty days from then, right?
Ninety.
Ninety, I believe.
Ninety. Well, we're, we're good then. Thank you. Okay. So, so let's, let's tentatively at least schedule it for the 12th of May, if that's okay with planning staff. That would be great. We appreciate all of the hard work that the Planning Department has done on this. And we noted the petitioner's willingness to work through issues, which is great. And you could see some of that in the packet. But just to give enough time to, you know, hopefully go out and look at the property for those who haven't yet, or to, you know, review the packet in depth and ask staff any questions they may have, that would be, that would be a good date for us, okay? Anything else for Mr. Myers on this petition? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. All right. All right. Next, we have Ms. Nestor Jelen, Assistant Director of the Planning Department, who has a slew of ordinance amendments that she's bringing to us. And if you could walk through those, that would be fabulous. Thank you. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. So I figure the easiest way to present these, I'm going to clump two out of the four together. And then I'm just, I have a quick presentation. And you'll notice on the left-hand side, the ordinance number, and then the reference that we have through the Planning Department to take it through the proper channels. So before I get started, the four zoning text amendments that are before you today all received a positive recommendation by the Plan Commission to be brought forward to the County Commissioners. So you'll see this at the work session. And then if no other questions, we'll take this to the formal session the following week. So the first two ordinances I would like to review with you are 2021-14 and 2021-16. And these both relate to amending the zoning text in order to allow for amendments when properties are adjoining bridges or overpasses. So with the recent I-69 construction, as well as redevelopment funds, we're starting to see more and more overpasses, especially over railroads. And so that's come into question, some of the commercial sites that are below those bridges or overpasses, and whether they need to abide by certain restrictions such as parking setbacks and specifically streetscape landscaping as well. So I'm going to walk through a couple of samples with you. So staff went ahead and put together just some visuals for what we're talking about. And so this first example is pertaining to the streetscape, although you can also relate it as well to the parking setback. So the example I gave is kind of near the Third Street exit when you're on 3745 here. And the image that you see is an overhead where cars are passing by. And the site that I have highlighted and starred here is the one in the next image that you'll see here. So under our current ordinance provision, they would be required to put a streetscape landscape buffer, as well as a parking setback that in some areas in close to the city limits, would push back their parking behind buildings to have a building-forward view of it. But as you can tell, that's not really being achieved here when there's an overpass, because the idea is aesthetically and to make sure that there's no, you know, public harm or anything like that. But when you have an overpass or a bridge, it's not really being, the intent is there, but it's, it's not really played out as well. So we're asking for an amendment to the streetscape as well as a parking setback. And then I have another example here. This is Mother Mayor's Pizza. This is in the city, but just a good example here, where you have like a streetscape and parking setback as well, would have pushed this back. So another example that we have forthcoming with, you know, new roadways being proposed and connected, this profile Parkway extension is already in the works. But there is a discussion of putting together something that would connect ultimately Vernal down to Gates Drive through at Sunrise Greetings. And so these are all commercial properties. This would not have any impact on residential properties, because they do not require parking setbacks or streetscape. So the two changes that you'll see here are related to the two different zoning chapters. So first is Chapter 833. And so under 833, there's a parking setback that is considerably larger than the building setback, and considerably larger than what we would require in the rest of the county jurisdiction, which is only ten feet. So under these examples, you have a minimum of fifty feet. And so you'll see that, that the request is that there's not a parking setback when the property is adjoining or abutting an overpass or bridge. And then the same goes for commercial streetscape, although there's an administrative waiver provision, so that there's a determination that could be made by the administrator as to whether the streetscape intent would be met, or otherwise, you know, not meet the safety and aesthetic objectives of the requirement, then they would be able to apply for a waiver and not put in the streetscape. So I'm going to pause there for a second and let me know if you have questions on these first two text amendments.
Okay. So there would be no setback for the parking at all?
This one would not require a parking setback for a bridge or overpass. But I'll note in many of these examples where you actually have a bridge or overpass, it's a good question, Penny, is that the property line starts considerably far back from where the actual bridge or overpass is. And so by nature of an overpass or bridge, you have wider right-of-way anyways. And so the, the line that they would be able to start their parking would be set back for, far enough, because it couldn't be located in the right-of-way.
Thank you.
That's typically a grade change. Yes, good question. I'll move on to the next text amendment. So this is a text amendment to Chapter 802, and it's regarding elderly housing. And elderly housing is a use that we currently have in the zoning ordinance. However, at the time it was implemented in the use table, it did not get designated as a permitted use in any of the zoning districts. So we believe that was done in error, and we'd like to correct that error and also make some updates to today's standards as well. So we are requesting that elderly housing definition, and then as well as the use table, and then a condition of a permitted use are all updated in this text amendment. So we're asking elderly housing to be permitted in high-density residential as well as urban residential zoning districts. And then we're updating the definition to focus in on the federal act that allows for housing for older persons, and so that you don't have to comply with the equal housing opportunity. This allows for an exemption specifically to developments that are focusing on elderly housing for people that are either fifty-five and over, or sixty-two and over with some level of conditions associated at the federal level. So we're saying in this definition, we're defining our elderly housing in accordance with the federal statute as well to be compliant. And then we also removed some language about the auxiliary services, such as barber, beauty service, pharmacy, things like that. We, we note that elderly housing is always located in areas with sewer. And so typically, where there's sewer, there's more density, there's more services anyways. And so we didn't see it as helpful to have those services also be located on the same lot as elderly housing, because you start bringing in different zoning requirements, such as parking, such as other outside users, not just for the actual housing development here. And the, the site plan just gets a little bit more complex, because we don't have many of these in the county. And then lastly, a condition of a permitted use for, if a new elderly housing wanted to locate on a property, we're having the site plan be approved at the Plan Commission level when there are multiple elderly housing units proposed on one lot. So right now, we don't have a lot of zones that permit multifamily outside of the fringe areas of the county. And so what we're hoping for is that if we do see an elderly housing complex or development show up, that we would be able to have additional oversight by the Plan Commission and be able to have some transparency with the public as well, that that project would be going forward. And then lastly, you know, any project must meet the high bulk density standards of the zoning district in which it is located. So even though it can have multiple units, it has to so comply with the zoning requirement or rezone to another zone, like a PUD. So I have an example here in Steinsville. Richland Senior Housing is actually a project that's going through right now for funding and refinancing. And so they're zoned high-density residential and would qualify under this as a permitted use. So here is just an image of, of the units there. And that's just kind of a typical development that we see for elderly housing out in the county, and again, located on sewer. And we see this as kind of phase one of a code update. We are working through the county development ordinance to wholesale fix a lot of these issues and tighten up things. But in the interim, we just, we need to have some of these uses and things clarified, because, you know, it takes time to redo the entire ordinance. And we need to make sure that we're compliant all the way through and through. But this is kind of phase one to get us ultimately where we can discuss how elderly housing should look in the future as well. Do we have any questions on that one?
Other my colleagues, no?
Okay. I'll move on to the last text amendment, which is 2021-17. And this is amendment to Chapter 818, which is a permit revocation procedure. So the permit revocation procedure currently allows for the administrator to find sufficient grounds for revoking a permit, certificate, or approval, and gives the recipient ten days to cure. The idea is that you would only, in a ideal circumstance, you would never have to revoke a permit, because everyone would comply with everything that was laid out in the application, as well as the permit limitations. But from time to time, we do get permits and applications and actions that don't all comply with one another. So if there's a situation which we have to send a following revocation notice, we would like to instead give the recipient ten days to cure. We would like them to be able to repeal the administrative decision to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That way, if someone essentially doesn't comply with the ordinance five, six, seven times, we wouldn't keep giving them ten days to fix the issue. We find that if they're not able to comply with the ordinance after the first time that you request a revocation of permit, then it's just a non-compliant issue. And it kind of creates a lot of ambiguity for staff that, okay, well, they're going to have ten days, they're going to fix it. And then, you know, will this come back as an issue months later? And so we would like it to be reviewed ultimately by the Board of Zoning Appeals if they want to request an appeal of the administrative decision to revoke after the first notice. So it, it says, "In the event that a subsequent violation of the ordinance occurs and a first attempt of revocation has previously occurred, this procedure may be followed." So there is some allowance for the administrator to follow this process if they find it fit. And so if the administrator finds sufficient grounds exist for revocation of a permit, certificate, or approval, the administrator shall send the recipient written notice of the revocation, shall inform the recipient of the specific basis found to justify revocation. With the notice of revocation, the administrator shall inform the recipient of their right to appeal the administrator's action, and that the revocation becomes effective the date the written notice is issued, and the use must cease immediately. And I'll note, not shown on the page 818-5, right below this, if it were to be sent to someone, is the process and the directions for how to appeal an administrative action. So it's right there in the ordinance as well.
All right, let's see if there are any questions on that.
No, I don't have any questions. Most of it seems to make a lot of sense.
Has, has the legal department reviewed these changes, Ms. Nestor Jelen?
Yes, that's a good question, Penny. We, we have taken this through to the Plan Commission, as well as the Ordinance Review Committee. And Mr. Schilling has met with us on a number of occasions to review this before it went out in each packet. So we feel like it's had a really good spot, and has received proper review by legal and others. Thank you.
So my colleagues, would you be interested in hearing these four ordinances next week on May 5th at our meeting?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, great. Okay, great. Can you, can you bring these back for us then?
Sure.
Excellent, great. And, uh, if, if other questions arise, we'll just contact you directly in the meantime.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you everyone.
Excellent, all right. And next, um, item three, uh, Ms. Beerman, um, will be talking about resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen.
Yeah, hi. Good afternoon at this point. Um, and I'm going to go ahead and share screen and just scroll through the packet today. I'll probably have a bit more of a formal presentation, um, for the more formal meeting with a few more bells and whistles on the photos. Um, so this is the agenda overview for the, um, nomination and it's, basically what we're doing is the Monroe County Start Preservation Board is a certified local government entity um, that participates in the nomination of properties to the National Register. And on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Board of Review considered the petition HPNR dash twenty-one dash one, the nomination to the National Register of Historic Places for the Stip Bender Farm. And this is located at fifty seventy-five West Victor Pike. They made a positive recommendation based on the findings with a vote of five to zero, which allows us to then bring this before the county commissioners. Um, and the commissioners basically will be looking at to see, you know, if this application, um, you know, kind of brings in, uh, educational, cultural, economic, aesthetic and general welfare. If, if this application and by nominating the Stip Bender Farm kind of supports, you know, this, this type of feel. And, um, ultimately the resolution is to accept and approve the nomination and then forward it to the Division of Historic Preservation and Archaeology um, so that they can then review it in great detail, uh, and then it then gets forwarded on to the federal level um, for the National Register approval process. And so, um, like I said, the board did, the Board of Review did review this. Um, Danielle Bichat Bell is the person who is nominating, she is the board chair. She excused herself from the meeting and left, so she is not a part of this vote per the rules of procedure. But she is, um, the applicant here for the petition. We have a lot of exhibits. This, um, staff report ended up being seventy-nine pages and I don't think I'm going to go through all seventy-nine pages today. But just wanted to kind of give you an overview of this nomination. Um, this is a picture of the Stip Bender Farmhouse in Perry Township, um, built in eighteen seventy-six. And it's located here at fifty seventy-five West Victor Pike. Um, it's very close to State Road thirty-seven and, you know, there is an interesting history that the board kind of acknowledged about how this farm over time was kind of split up by certain roads and, and features that went in, in the surrounding area. And they're basically left with this parcel right here, which houses a lot of different, um, structures and, and different, uh, buildings. So the Board of Review, um, basically was reviewing what the eligible criteria were to make this a significant, like nomination. And they ultimately, um, fell upon part A and part C of the nomination requirements. So, um, they did find that the property is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history. And also part C, uh, the property embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type of period or method of construction or represents the work of a master or possesses high artistic values or represents a significant and distinguishable entity whose components lack individual distinction. And so, you know, these were the two properties that mostly the board was focusing on. And then also just making sure that like there, that the application itself and staff also were just looking to make sure that all of the requirements for the application were submitted in the proper format. Um, and we, you know, should this resolution pass, then we will be forwarding that all in a very specific format to the state. Um, I will note that, you know, this, the Stip Bender Farmhouse got an outstanding, um, approval in the interim report from nineteen eighty-nine and then also, um, in the twenty fifteen, um, Monroe County report, it was a notable. So it kind of went down a bit, um, not clear why, but, um, just, you know, within the report for the staffer report, we do have a lot of the photos of the house itself, both exterior and interior. Uh, we have a lot of the different structures and, um, barns that are around, surrounding it and then some of the other supporting items on site. So it was a very, uh, detailed and thorough report that was presented and submitted. This is the technical review that planning staff kind of went through just to make sure that all the exhibits, all of the things that were attached in the application sort of met a certain criteria. And then, um, you know, just some other supporting documents. And then we went through a lot of historical, um, maps for the township over time, dating back as far as eighteen fifty-six. Danielle submitted those. And the topo map and then some aerials throughout time. So this one went back to nineteen thirty-nine. Um, so I hope you take a mo-, like a little bit of time to, to go through the packet and review some of the items. There's the, the sketch map that Danielle submitted as part of the nomination register, or the nomination application and then some of the floor plans. Um, the application itself is also included. Um, it is a forty-four page document. Um, and, you know, again, we will be submitting this to the state where they will do a thorough review, um, making sure that criteria A, criteria C are met. Um, I do know that Danielle Bichat Bell is here if you had any questions. Um, and we're hoping to bring this back next week for a formal presentation. So if you have any questions, um, let me know.
Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time. Um, this looks pretty exciting to me.
Yeah, it was, it was fun to review.
Yeah.
Could we share? Yeah, but I'd love to go into the old barn and I'd love to have a tour of the house, the, the woodwork. It just, and like the wood floors and newals, then, yeah, it just looks gorgeous and looks like it's been really well maintained.
Yeah, this is, uh, really just an incredible property and want to thank the property owners for working toward this very worthy goal. Um, it's, it's, um, an incredible, uh, testament to their love and care for the history of Monroe County and its homes, specifically this one. And, yeah, the barn is just amazing. It is just absolutely amazing to see. Um, I did, so, uh, Ms. Bichat Bell is here if, if anyone has questions for her.
I noticed that she was the photographer for all this.
Yes, Penny, I do all of the work, uh, as part of the nomination. That's what you typically would do. Um, do all the photography work and all of the, all, all, all of that work. Um, one thing I can actually say to back up, um, Tammy's, um, the discussion between, um, the ratings when it was surveyed is because in nineteen eighty-nine, the house, um, was, um, it still had its original wood windows and its original wood siding. And sometime after two thousand and one, um, the owners at that time replaced the windows, sometime after two thousand and one, they replaced the windows, windows with vinyl and put vinyl siding on the, on the house. So that is the reason that the surveyor more recently, um, downgraded the house to notable as opposed to outstanding. Um, the, the Division of Historic Preservation and Archaeology, um, in making their determination of eligibility for this property, did say that the collection of, um, owl buildings with the farm um, is what really particularly sets this apart as being, um, eligible to be nominated because we, we did have to go through that process with them first. You've, um, do a DOE, Determination of Eligibility, application. And so that is what, um, what helped set it apart. Um, the stone wall and then all of the outbuildings that are associated with the, with the house. So there's quite a few of them.
Great. And so you recused yourself from the vote because you're actually working as a consultant for the petitioner, correct?
Yes, yes, correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. All right. Great. Well, thank you for your, um, diligence and, and detailed work on this. Um, it's an amazing piece of property and, uh, we're excited to see what happens next. And so, uh, do my colleagues have any, uh, concerns about bringing this back, this resolution back, uh, next week on the fifth of May?
Yep.
We're good? Okay. Great. Excellent. Thank you, uh, so much. Um, we appreciate you being here. And, um, and we appreciate the, the, the patience of Ms. Cottle, uh, for waiting with, uh, uh, for item four here to come up. And, um, we're ready for you whenever you are, Ms. Cottle.
I, I am. And, you know, good, good stuff happening. I, I will admit, I stepped away from the conference room to my desk to take a care, care of a little business while listening to, to everything that was going on. So we're multitasking. It's all good. The Health Department has received from the Indiana Department of Health, uh, an award for COVID vaccine in the amount of forty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and seven cents. And it is essentially tied to doing additional kind of mass clinics. Um, so tied to some of the additional vaccine we got, uh, kind of last minute. We added the May fourteenth date. Uh, we have a couple other outreaches coming up. So that's what prompted and led to us getting these additional funds. Uh, the grant period is March twenty-fifth through June thirtieth. This is a reimbursable where a couple of the other grants that we've received have been deliverable based. Uh, once we completed certain things, then we got a portion of the money. This is population based. So the amount of money that we received was based on our population.
Excellent. Great. Um, so, uh, questions from my colleagues?
No, I don't.
Will any of this be used for some of the outreach, uh, that you're doing? Were you going out to specific populations or?
It will. The one thing about this is it, it is additional funds. It can't supplant. Uh, so we will have to watch very carefully, you know, not regular time, uh, but over time, people have things like that. But yes, it will be used for those additional clinics as well.
Awesome.
Primarily, it will pri- primarily be staff time that we're talking about.
Okay, so, um, so that, would this be considered, uh, something that, and this is really a question for legal, is this something that we would ratify or is this a new grant?
I think you could, you could approve it and ratify it if you wish.
Okay. Sorry, I got my words confused. I meant it, this was a, a renewal of a grant and otherwise we'd have to approve with ratification. Thank you. Um, it's been a long day already. Um, all right, well, let's see if, um, let's see, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we, um, approve the Indiana Department of Health Grant for COVID vaccine funding, uh, to be considered for ratification on May fifth.
Second?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. I do not see any. Okay, um, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the, uh, Department of Health Grant for COVID vaccine funding?
Uh, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing it forward. Thank you for waiting. Um, we also have on our agenda, um, and, uh, let's see, so we have Ms. Ridge here and if we could bring over, um, Ms. Fatonia and Mr. Satterley as well, that would be great. Um, so this is, it's not on our agenda, but we thought with all of this discussion about, uh, Southern Meadows, um, the, um, the PUD that we just heard, uh, today, the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, Joseph Green PUD outline plan amendment. Um, and then also the discussion that came up with a previous, um, petition that has been withdrawn by the petitioner, but they can basically do, um, a medium residential, uh, um, density residential zoning by right. Um, we just thought it would be good to have a discussion about this, this portion of the county specifically. Um, Rogers, that, and, uh, maybe even Victor in this area and how all of this development impacts things, how it fits in with the master plan.
So, I don't know, I'm just going to kind of let Paul speak on it. Um, I know we put our master thoroughfare plan, plan together. I think it was approved in two thousand seventeen, possibly, two thousand eighteen. Um, I know Rogers Street and Victor Pike are listed in that master thoroughfare plan. Um, Paul, if you want to speak on how these, how, what's looked at into the roadways on, on an engineering, um, direction of how they handle the traffic and, and things that maybe we look at for the, within the thoroughfare plan.
And I think your phone is muted, Paul.
Yeah, it's always fun to be on the phone and on the computer at the same time. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, in terms of, uh, the thoroughfare plan, uh, Rogers Street is a classified as a minor collector. And that road, I'm trying to look at the map. Appears to be a, um, local road, but can't be positive, but I think it's a local road. And then Victor Pike is a major collector. And let's see what else. I think Church Lane is a, is a local road. So those are the, the roads that service the, that area. But, um, we did look at the, the traffic study that, uh, Southern Meadows provided us and went through the analysis of their proposed, uh, left, adding left turn lanes on, onto Rogers Street and then adding lanes, um, on the east side of, of Rogers Street on that road. They provided a left turn lane, both directions to service the, uh, Clear Creek Development as well as serve the left turns coming out of the Southern Meadows and Clear Creek, uh, development. So, and we also looked at the, the traffic levels for all, for both, uh, actually Southern Meadows, Clear Creek and the Trails, uh, formerly known as the White Oak Development. And they estimate that, uh, with any of the developments, if two of them reach an eighty percent, uh, build out that, uh, an all-way stop would be warranted at, at the VAT Road Rogers Street intersection. So based on that, I, I guess, uh, approve of the traffic study and their, their recommendations.
What is the line of sight leading up to the, uh, from the north and the south on Rogers Road that would lead up to that intersection?
Um, the only, uh, line of sight problems you would have would be looking towards the north, uh, towards the bridge over Clear Creek. And that would have affected the originally proposed driveway on the north end of Clear Creek. proposed driveway on the north end of Clear Creek, the Clear Creek Development, but we had recommended that that drive be limited to the Smithville Maintenance for their fiber-optic building there only, and they, they revised the plan so all their access would come off of that road. So that was the only sight distance concern we had was the, the approach to the bridge over Clear Creek.
And what about with the proposed commercials, kind of, well, I guess the, the commercial portions that are being suggested at the Clear Creek request?
Those, those are set back far enough, they're actually behind the proposed multi-use path, and there's also a, a grass buffer between the path and the curb, so there'd be adequate sight distance from that intersection to see both north and south.
But was that, was the increased traffic from that taken into account with the traffic study?
Yes, all, they actually forecasted future traffic growth and then accounted for all three developments in the area for the increase in traffic, and then the analysis showed that there would be no problem handling that traffic with an all-way stop intersection.
Okay. Will it need to eventually move to a traffic light?
It'd be quite some time, because of the, the added left turn lanes, north and south, that adds extra capacity, as well as the left turn lane coming out of Clear Creek, Southern Meadows adds extra capacity, so, oh, traffic signal, if ever, might be fifteen, twenty years in the future, I would estimate. Yeah, the, the full, I guess this didn't come up in the, in the Plan Commission meeting, but the Fuller, our Fullerton Project, the extension of Gordon Pike out to Fullerton will help relieve a lot of traffic from the VAT Road Rogers Street intersection, so when that gets built out in twenty twenty-three, or I guess it'll be constructed twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, but let's say twenty twenty-five, the Gordon Pike Fullerton Corridor will handle a lot more traffic and will help to relieve traffic in this area, so, you know, the traffic signal may actually, if ever required, would be even farther out in the future with the build out of the Fullerton Pike Corridor.
When, Paul, just as sort of general information, public certification, when a traffic study is done anywhere, how many trips per day do they estimate per residence, per actual residential?
Each, each unit gets about ten trips per day, per unit.
Wow.
And that's pretty much, well, that includes your delivery services, going to work and back, school and back, but yeah, about ten per unit, and that pretty much covers any type of single-family home and also per apartment unit, it's pretty close to the same number.
Yeah.
But yeah, about ten trips a day.
Yeah. So, so it's, it's hard to, I, I think the difficult thing about traffic studies is that when you have, you don't really know how, what, what routes people will take, so although we don't yet have Southern, the Southern Meadows Development Plan in front of us, it's still, it's still being discussed at the Plan Commission level, it's interesting that, you know, if they have a hundred and ninety-one units, we don't really know if, if people will, will drive to the east and it's South Walnut, or if they're going to drive through the, the Joseph Green PUD that we just had and use that and Rogers. It's so hard to know that, right?
Well, yeah, it's, it's tough to estimate. I think their study, they assume that the majority of the traffic would come through the VAT and Rogers intersection, so that actually maybe accelerates the warrant, or the timing on the warrant for an all-way stop, but you know, it's some, we'll, we'll keep an eye on the intersection, once it does get constructed and do, you know, periodic volume checks, and it wouldn't take very long to get an all-way stop installed there, you know, it goes through the Traffic Commission and then through you guys and, or then gets advertised before we put it up, but it's typically only a two-month process, so I mean, we're, we can respond to that pretty quickly, once it does meet, meet the warrant requirement.
Yeah. I think, I think one of the concerns I have about this area specifically is because we don't know what's gonna happen with that Trails project that we heard initially, a Plan Commission has been pulled, but also because if we want to encourage the use of the Trail, it's not that far away that hopefully people will be able to safely cross the streets, across Rogers at that road to walk up to connect with the Trail, right, if they're coming from.
Well, unfortunately, the bridge across Clear Creek is pretty narrow.
Yeah.
There's, I wouldn't call it dangerous, but you'd have to be pretty careful to walk along the, what there is of a shoulder, maybe two foot wide or so, but you know, that's something that could be improved in the future.
Yeah.
With either a bridge replacement, you know, when it comes up, or even adding a pedestrian bridge next to it.
Yeah. If somebody was walking, let's say they were walking from Southern Meadows toward the intersection of that and Rogers, they would actually have to sort of go north to connect with the Trail rather than just continuing on that road.
Well, the only way to get to the Trail to the north would be walking along Rogers Street, and there's, you know, that shoulder is narrow as well, across the bridge to the north, so it, it's kind of a, kind of a tricky situation, but yeah, something, I mean, if, as the development builds out, there's probably something we would wanna do to accommodate that pedestrian traffic.
Yeah, and so the question then is how do we ensure that there is really good, because that's one of the selling points here, right? How do we really ensure that there is good connectivity in this very specific area of that and Rogers? Is there something we can do at the, at this point as the development plan is proposed? What would you recommend that, that we do?
Well, it could be as basic as, as adding a sidewalk to the existing bridge, you know, one side or both possibly, and depending on that cost, it could be either adding the, the sidewalk or possibly replacing the bridge structure to accommodate that, or even adding a, a parallel pedestrian bridge, you know, one of those prefab standalone pedestrian bridges, but yeah, just one of the restrictions there, it's, it's a little bit narrow, and so you get, you know, it would probably, you'd get into right-of-way challenges there as well.
Okay. If we look at the thoroughfare plan, the Master Thoroughfare Plan, there really isn't any plan for Rogers, that, Victor, right?
The only, the only plans we've got are for Fullerton Gordon Pike Corridor, and then the realignment of Church, Church Lane has been identified and proposed as a, a future project, and that's pretty much it in that area.
Okay. My colleagues have any other questions? I'm just concerned about the safety of both the pedestrian and vehicular traffic, and even the bicyclists down through there.
From what I've seen, bicyclists seem to get, get along on Rogers Street pretty well. Fortunately, it's, you know, it's thirty mile an hour speed limit, doesn't have super-high volume right now, so it's not, it's not one of our busiest streets for sure. The majority of your traffic is, is north of the Gordon Pike Corridor, that's where you see the, the most, you know, the greatest share of traffic is north of Gordon Pike, but kind of falls off a little bit as you go farther south, but I've seen cyclists there manage pretty well.
Well, I was, I was indicating that if, with the increase in the buildup out there, that it might change things significantly, and it's either gonna change things like additional school buses and stuff.
Yeah, but it, it would be nice to have a, a better pedestrian access across the, along that road to access the Trail, so that would definitely be one of the primary focus items.
Does it, does that feel like something that should be required of one of these petitioners, rather than something that all county taxpayers pay for?
Well, we could, we could take a look at the, the bridge inventory and the bridge condition status and see when, when that bridge structure might be due for repairs or replacements, and then maybe go from there, but.
Because it's really kind of off-property, right? It's kind of, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's, I mean.
Their development.
Yeah, they're, they're doing the adjacent improvements, they're widening Rogers Street, they're adding the left turn lanes, Southern Meadows is, and yeah, to go across the street might be a stretch for, for off-site improvements, but I'll let Lisa commit to any, any bridge there.
Are you talking about the bridge? Are you talking about the bridge on Roger Street or on that road?
On that road, to cross pedestrians to get over to the hiking trail.
So.
I'd have to look at our inventory to see what, what's up with that one.
Actually, I had just brought, let me look at something here really quick. We had this discussion in our last bridge inspection meeting last month, and I believe, they've only got the numbers of the bridge on there, Bridge eighty-three and Bridge nine thirteen. Let me check on those, I just now got, actually, I just now received a scope of work for the, to begin design of those, because the one on that road does fall within our five-year plan already, so I believe when we.
Yeah, that, that's the one out towards the other Trail, or the other Trail link, it's farther left.
I think we were talking about this one, eighty-three or nine thirteen? Yeah, Bridge eighty-three or Bridge nine thirteen, which.
Oh, nine thirteen's a Business Thirty-seven North.
What's eighty-three?
I think that was on, I'm looking at the map.
I don't have a map in front of me, I don't have a computer, it's not working right now.
Is that, is that Dillman? I forget. But anyway, the VAT Road Bridge is one twenty-two, the one that's closest to Southern Meadows, yeah.
Okay. So I know, and when we just got our last bridge inspection books with Beam, we sat down and had a meeting with them, the bridge on that road was discussed of where we wanted it to fall within our five-year plan, so we were in the process of getting that back, but I do, I do believe that we suggested that we start the process of putting that, we usually start to try and put it into design mode, and then getting them ready for future community crossing programs and such as that. So when I, we should be getting our new five-year plan back anytime, so let me see where that falls at, make sure I'm talking about the same bridge, but I know we talked about the bridge on that road.
Yeah, Bridge seventy-nine's the one that has the, the load limit restriction on it.
Okay.
And that's near the Clear Creek Trail, right adjacent to the Clear Creek Trail.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just thinking, Lisa, about, about a pedestrian who is at the corner of the future corner of that and Rogers, and how they would proceed to get onto the Trail, right? There's, we, so we don't, we don't have any plans because we don't have right-of-way to put a sidewalk along the entirety of Rogers, right? We, there's, there would be, if, if this petition's approved, there would be a little bit of sidewalk right in front of the development, but we're really limited here in terms of making this accessible for pedestrians and bike traffic, right? I mean, because you have this really interesting confluence of the Trail and new development, and how do we make them all work together? And, and that, that's really what, where this is all coming from, especially given the fact that there's a hundred and ninety-one homes proposed for Southern Meadows. I don't remember the number of homes proposed at the Trails, but it would be more than a hundred.
It was like a hundred and forty-one or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's, and that's, so, so now you're adding a lot more people, you're adding, you know, you're gonna have a new library in the area, you're gonna have new, you know, how can we make all of this work together? And, and any advice or suggestions you have would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Yeah, that's, it's tough.
The key is the connection.
Yeah.
Is the pedestrian connection across Clear Creek, because once, granted that Trail's undeveloped, it's just dirt path right now, but that's owned and maintained by the city, and you know, it'd be just a matter of paving it, and you could go north and south to connect to all the Trail systems.
Do you know what, that's any in the MPO plans at all, Paul?
I think the city is planning to pave the CSX portion as far south as the, the Rogers Street crossing of the old Illinois Central Corridor, from what I've heard, but I haven't seen anything so, I think they're supposed to also pave between Country Club and Gordon Pike as well.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, if you could just give it some thought and, and give us, you know, so, share any ideas that you have, and if you could find out any specific information about, about that bridge on that road, before we hear this petition again, which is in two weeks, so it'll be May twelfth, that would be really helpful, especially longer term, how can we make all of this work so that it's safe, pedestrian-friendly, we're not putting people onto Rogers to walk, right? I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot going on.
Right.
And I, you know, I'm just concerned that we're gonna, we're gonna miss out on something here.
I will definitely look into the bridge status, not a problem.
Great. Does anybody have other questions on anything relating to level of service or stormwater? I know Ms. Patonia is with us, if anybody has any, any stormwater questions in this area specifically? So they're putting in a detention area at the southern end of, of what was proposed for the Joe Green. Can you talk about whether or not what they're proposing is sufficient?
Yes, it is very sufficient. So they'll have a surface detention pond on the south side of that Joseph Green project, as Drew said, as well as some parking lot underground detention by the, the building on the north side. So that project is meeting the new. So that project is meeting the new critical area release rates, and they've demonstrated they have enough space to stir all of that stormwater on site. So Terry was satisfied with the preliminary plans. I'm satisfied and we'll just be looking for more detailed plans.
And what about the the parking spaces, the outdoor parking spaces in terms of the permeability or whatever is needed here?
We haven't really discussed that with them yet. Certainly, if they want to do permeable pavers and all that, it's it's wonderful for you know, having some more infiltration. So I'm definitely in favor of all that, and the maintenance of those will all be tied into their O and M manual. So that's pretty standard, and I I think it's a great idea if they have any like underground parking or something, we'll want to make sure that any any oils or things are are put through, you know, a treatment unit or something to make sure that it doesn't get discharged without treatment. But all that can be taken care of when we discuss the full detailed plans.
When you look at these plans, do you just consider each plan individually, or are you looking at the overall impact of all of them together?
That's a great question. So one of the reasons for implementing standardized release rates for these areas for, you know, the critical watersheds, as well as countywide, is because it takes into account what our local streams can handle. Our current ordinance, before we approve those release rates, just looks at the individual site, the water coming off of that site, and how can we basically not make anything worse? So when the work that Terry was doing with the new ordinance, the consultant looked countywide at all of our streams and basically what they can handle. And so that's how they came up with standardized release rates, just countywide. And that's what we'll be implementing with the new ordinance, including what was passed last October for the, just the critical area watersheds. So that'll be a huge improvement, not to, you know, just break even, so to speak, but it will hopefully, you know, address the issue of more regional flooding issues. If any of our local engineering firms want to do, you know, pay for an individual watershed study for an area they're working on, if say they don't want to stick to, you know, the point nine, point five cubic feet per second per acre, they're welcome to contract that out and we'll review it and prove it if they want to, you know, use different release rates. But but that will look at things more regionally.
So will there come to be a point where we would just say this stream is at capacity and we cannot be developing anymore because the stream simply can't handle it?
That's, that is really difficult because, you know, for Clear Creek, much of the development occurred before we had these regulations. So to me, it's not exactly it it doesn't quite make so much sense if we're already putting stringent regulations on the drainage of new development and redevelopment projects. I I think if we want to fix some of these issues, we could be looking at doing some more retrofits of, you know, existing areas that have no retention or detention. That's something I'm happy to, you know, work with the city on. They're currently doing their stormwater master plan and absolutely looking at areas that they can, you know, fit in some more you know, practices upstream. But I I think with our current ordinance in place, well, the the new ordinance, it it will give us those protections on these properties. And, you know, one development meeting these regulations is not going to be the one contributing to, you know, the downstream flooding. It's everything that has already happened. You know, the developed watershed upstream. The ones that I am cautious on are the two watersheds where we have terminal sinkholes because those are different. Those watersheds really could, you know, we do have detailed studies on those watersheds and, you know, we're that's one of the main drivers for issuing more stringent release rates is because those watersheds certainly you know, we have the mapped hundred-year floodplains for those sinkholes. I want to make sure that we're not making things worse in those watersheds.
But yeah, these are great questions and great answers. So what what are the two watersheds that end in the the sinkhole terminus?
Uh, we have the Cave Creek watershed and Sinkin Creek.
Right.
We named.
Okay, so so this particular development that's in front of us that we're going to hear again in two weeks at that and Rogers. Was it designed with the more stringent? It was designed with the more stringent stormwater design, okay. And something that you and I had talked about, and I thought it might be good to to raise this here. What is sort of the biggest driver of stormwater in Monroe County right now?
The biggest driver, what do you?
Where are we getting, where's our, where are we getting all the stormwater from? Where is this runoff coming from?
Um, well, so we obviously model everything using the rain events and those are standardized based on the, you know, most recent data we get through the National Weather Service. That's how we model it based on the rain events. If you're looking at a specific watershed, I mean, it's a huge watershed boundary, basically bisecting the county. The north part of the county goes to the Bean Bluffon Creek watershed flowing north. The south part goes south to the White River. Clear Creek watershed obviously has City of Bloomington developed in there, so a lot of that runoff is coming from the city. And and yeah, does that answer your question? I'm not sure.
It does, it does. I think I'm I'm really focused on this area and the and the impact of the city's stormwater coming into the county and we have to find a way to deal with it, maintain our roads, everything else. Okay. It does. Thank you.
I'll see, working with the City of Bloomington, since they're working on their their master plan for stormwater, I think that would be great if we could get, get a good relationship of working with them on that on and how it can help the outside limits of the City of Bloomington. And I hope that's, I hope they're looking at the broader picture versus just within the City of Bloomington. Of course, the run, you know, water doesn't know a boundary, so.
Absolutely. And I did mention, I I talked to them saying I would like to have a stakeholder meeting when they're at that phase in their master plan where the county and the city can discuss these stormwater issues. So so they know about that and and they'll contact us when it's time for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Yeah, anybody have anything else for Ms. Ridge, Mr. Satterley, Ms. Tonia? Okay, well, we we appreciate you all joining us and answering our questions. I think it's really helpful, especially because, for example, Commissioner Githman, this isn't, wasn't privy to the master thoroughfare plan when it first passed, but, you know, we we sent the link out and it's available on the county's website. I think it's a good thing for all of us to be aware of that, you know, we can look at an area like Rogers and that, and we could say, there's no plan to build more roadway here. There's no room, there's no space, there's no plan. And that's why I think it's important to have this discussion, especially with the impending discussions on Southern Meadows, the trails, the other projects in that area, all sort of happening at one time. So. All right, anything else for the good of the order? All right, I appreciate everybody's patience and good effort, and I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our work session meeting. And we will come back on May fifth for the next one.